All right, with that being six o'clock, we're going to open up the meeting. The site plan review from Ferry Realty Trust, 625 Main Street, 1315 Water Street.
Chief Philbin for Ferry Realty Trust.
Mr. Philbin.
Nice to see you.
Nice to see you again. I guess my only question is, what happened with the meeting with the traffic committee?
Well, I appeared at the meeting for the traffic committee, but we had to provide a number of plans, especially the planning committee here right now.
Okay.
So as a result, what they did is they taped each other's plan.
Okay.
They taped it, they made only, we have enough issues on the documents beyond their documents quickly. We will get them this plan, we'd like to get them also the building plans, which we don't have.
Okay.
But they taped it. It started with.
I thought it was going to be negress there.
These are pretty much going to be the plans. These are concept plans for the building. There's a notation right on it that it's only a concept, that's all it is. Because as my engineers tell me.
Coming to the exits.
So again, what we have is the. The addresses are both on Main Street and on Water Street now. Original building plans have been for commercial units on Water Street as well as, I think it's close to. 14 studio units on second floor of the Water Street building, as well as 4,400 square feet of space. As you're aware from the last meeting, the area is not going to be any commercial space on Water Street at all. There will be no one bedroom, any units, residential units on the Water Street at all. So the plan provides what we simply do is extend in the existing building, 625 Main Street, to the back.
Yep.
When we do that, that's where we're going to be putting in the additional units. There are going to be seven units in the old building, and there will be now 10 units in the new building. The way we're able to get the 10 units in the new building is by moving the transformer onto the area on to Water Street. And I think you can see on the plan where that is going to be now, the transformer.
Yep.
It's marked in blue.
Right here in the back?
Yep. Well, right up on Water Street.
It's right here.
Right there, yep.
So we had tried to talk to National Grid about mopping the transformer on the existing pool on the property, and you can't get anything out of National Grid.
No.
So the fault is putting on Water Street. We're going to have 22 spaces, 21 plus one handicap space. The handicap space is going to be right up on Main Street as you first come into the lot. That's exactly where the 10 foot 12, excuse me, right way is.
Where's the sidewalk?
So again, now we're talking about 17 one-bedroom units in the old, and then the addition that's going to be going on. The old plans, we're going to put parking in open space on the property, but now we're parking at least eight spaces are going to be underneath on the first floor of the new commercial building attached to the end of 625 Main Street.
Yeah. I mean, I think it looks 100% better than with the original idea with the building on Water Street.
Much better idea.
Much better.
We had had a traffic study done, but that was for the original plan.
Yeah.
For October of 2024. Again, with the changes, we expect that there's going to be less impact than the four units and the additional residential units. But again, we need to get this revised. We'd like to get it revised before we meet with the traffic committee as well.
Okay.
So we're looking to continue this matter for additional 30 days if we could, to September.
I spoke to Mr. Duffy. He had called me and said that as soon as you guys can get that, this plan to him and whatever paperwork he have, they'll have a meeting as soon as possible, so they, I think they, they want to move things along for you too.
True. That's terrific.
So.
So we'll get to Mr. Duffy as quickly as we can, and then schedule, he can schedule the meeting.
Sure.
How's, Mr. Chairman, how's your relationship with Verizon, your neighbor?
I haven't heard anything from the neighbor.
Well, I mean, with all this going on, how are, you know, I mean, it's, they, they just come in and go out as it is, and I don't know where your property lines are and what it's going to affect Verizon, so I just, let's check into that, please.
Sure, we'll reach out to the owner of the building, who you want to reach out to now, or the building, which I believe is Arnold's. If we can, I think he's up in the west.
We had some discussion, Mr. Chairman, last time about that being a right turn only on the water, exit only.
We took that in last time.
All right, let's make sure that, that the traffic committee understands that that's the pleasure of this board.
We'll let them know what you'd like to see on that. Again, again, I don't know if that's going to make it possible, but let's, let's see what we can work on.
Yeah.
Anything else, Chairman?
Nope, just keep moving forward.
Terrific. Thank you very much for the time.
All right. See you next month, hopefully. That being said, in our, for 830-94 Main Street, anybody here for that?
Good evening, Tom Barfree of Real Estate Development, LLC. First night, we've directed in our plan. If you recall last month, we presented may and our plan is executed. By the board, we have since found that there were three dimensions missing on that plan, so here tonight with a revised ROR, that includes those three dimensions, here, here, here. None of the lot areas have changed, none of the furniture has changed, those dimensions which we have here. On this plan, which was the plan that is executed, those dimensions on those interior lots were missed and not plotted.
Okay.
I thought I noticed that.
You have Yimila?
Yes. We have Yimila on top.
That'll be Yimila, then.
Do you have a shot? Do you have it with you?
Have a good night. All right, with that being said, for a bunch of informals tonight, current middle school update, Marissa Valentino.
So you have for your approved plan, so we're talking now, this site, currently is a straight configuration. So what you're seeing in black is the approved plan, and red is the proposed provision. What happened was during the construction, the construction process, we discovered there's a utility pool here.
Yes.
And so then, in order to not pay the movement.
Or National Grid.
Yes, or or deal with the National Grid timeline.
You'd still be waiting for it before the building even got built.
Yeah. Closing the ship is, it's a little greater than 25 feet more. It's still a, the access gate is still the same when just slightly shifted more toward this hole.
The other benefit of doing this, and Kevin Bartlett agreed with us, he was very happy, is that we are now not touching the fire hydrant.
Fire hydrant, yep. Okay.
So he actually, so not touching it.
Okay, looks good.
So we just wanted to bring before, you know, as a, the condition of the site plan approval was that any major changes had been to be brought before, planned before, so just wanted to make everyone aware, so that you went out there after construction and that you were aware that the.
Yeah.
It was shifted.
Okay, fair enough. Looks good.
The only change, right?
That's, that's the only change.
So far, so far.
Baby steps.
Okay, looks good.
No problem.
Just get a copy of that and, and get a copy to Laura's so she can put it in.
Yes, I can put it in. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Jamie Tomzick, 952 Main Street.
Hello.
Hi, how are you?
Good, how are you?
Good. So I recently opened a business here in my home, making cookies, I rent my apartment and everything, certified and everything through Board of Health, the building, etc. My question was, is I'm looking to hopefully have some sort of car outside of my home to, for people to drive up and purchase from me outside of the home, so.
Like an honor system type thing?
What's that?
Like an honor system thing?
Um, like I was looking to do it maybe once a month. I'm already pretty busy at markets and things, but this was sort of more a way for me to not have to put so much money out going into other towns, and also to just stay a little more local, so that everyone's kind of figuring out who I am.
Perfect.
Now, 952 Main Street, where's that, is that right across from like where Whitney's is, or somewhere down around there?
A little more than that, no. But yeah, I'm on the opposite side.
I'm by the water street.
Okay. I, I think, think it's a good thing, good luck.
Yeah, I got it.
Thank you, guys.
Have a good night.
You too. I'm ready to send it to you.
As long as it's under $25.
Thank you very much, guys.
Oh, Jesus, no.
Thank you.
Michelle Garrett, 16 Crown Street.
Hello. So I went to see Alex Gerrisman, and told him what I was looking to do with my house, and he told me I should come talk to you guys. So I was hoping to redo my front porch, and I also want to put a pool in my yard, which is like a side yard, I consider it a side yard, but it's on the front, it's on the road, I guess. So he looked at my property map, or two times ago, and he was like, well, you know, you could probably put a pool right there, based on like measurements or whatever, and I was like, okay, well, I was really hoping to put it like not right next to the house, like down, because it's a long yard. He was like, well, you'd have to ask them about that, so.
There it is.
Well, my setback.
That's zoning.
Zoning.
It's our one.
He didn't tell you to go see the zoning board?
Yeah.
That's.
So we come to the informal meeting on Tuesday night.
Well, that's.
So, and then my front porch is already existing, but it.
Yeah.
Needs to be read out. We redid the second quarter of our house five years ago, and we took the porch roof off, we didn't put it back on at the time, because the budget wasn't there, or I'm sure we won't do, so just the platform's been sitting there since then, and I want to like fix it up.
Yeah, that should be just, that's a simple, easy permit. It shouldn't touch anybody, it's been pre-existing. What's it, a crouch on the front hot line?
Yeah, so it's, um, my, my actual house is 24 feet from the road, and the porch is 18.
Yeah, if it's been there, it, he should be able to just issue the permit for that.
But I mean, the thing for the.
The pool is a separate issue.
The pool's a separate thing.
You're going to have to go to zoning.
So I actually come here for the pool, and I said, should I also ask him about the porch? And he said, yeah.
Yeah.
The, the pool issue, that's with the side yard with the setback, that's a zoning board issue.
Okay.
They're going to have to ask for a variance.
They're going to have to ask for a variance from them.
It's going to be a tough sell.
Oh, okay.
But the porch should be fine. The porch is no issue.
Yes, the side yard is kind of tough, because it's all fenced in private, but then you're saying it still has to be off the road so far that it's like off, you know, almost off my car. Yeah, so it just seems like, so you say I have to ask them.
You have to go to zoning, file for a variance for offsets, and then.
They get the neighbors, and you.
Got to see if they'll give it to you.
Get approval from the neighbors, and I can't see why not, because it's all fenced in anyways.
So it's just about having to go through this process, and you can't be quick, basically, have to go through this.
Can't go through us, because we can't give you the approval.
So I should tell them that you guys said the porch should be fine, and then see what he says from there?
Yes.
Okay.
Totally.
Sorry.
Okay. Have a good night.
Good luck.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Oh, Adam's saying, well, we were just looking at the zoning bylaws, see how quickly define, define these accessory structures, and have to respect the setback from the accessory structure, which is 8 feet side and rear in the zoning bylaws. Accessory structures, a lot of things like detached garages, they can be approached as a little bit more close to them.
Still there, there's.
Side and rear setback. So I don't know, I haven't seen drawings that applies to this.
Yeah, it's above ground, so I don't know if that matters, but.
How close they decide.
Um, so the rear, I could probably do like 8 feet, I think he said, but the front is really the issue.
Oh, who's coming to the front?
What was that?
The pool's coming.
There is no backyard, really.
Yeah, it's, that's what's like my front, house is here on my side, and it goes next to my house, so there's a mountain, front and back, and it's all fenced in.
Okay.
I was hoping there was an exception, but it looks like there's.
I wish we could help you.
Yeah. Sorry, I actually, thank you very much.
Well, good luck. Stephen McNamara, 191 Stone Street.
How are you doing, Doug?
Hello.
Just updating, I'm going with a small revision on 191 Stone Street. It was a 30 by 40, a 20 by 30.
Okay. How'd you make out with your wall?
Sighed.
Did it, did you get the engineer on that and stuff?
Engineering is all there, I don't have to care.
That was already all approved, yeah, right?
Yeah.
Oh, you've downsized it?
I just downsized it.
Yeah. I'm sorry, it's, it's good to me. Just give that to Laura, just.
All right.
All right, Stephen.
Thank you. So just.
Zalea Yusik, Cunningham, Franklin.
Where's the carriage?
You have a seat, I don't know, let's.
You have a seat?
Yep.
I understand you want to try and get close offs and.
Well, I see you have some, some contractors down there doing some work, and they look like they widened the thing on Union Street.
Let me handle this part, yeah, we did. We ended up widening it for access for the fire truck. We got a letter from Chief Luiz, who wanted some improvements on the sidewalk and the entranceway. At the same time, we were planning on putting up a gate and closing that entrance off, and only making it emergency vehicles only.
Okay.
That's where we are right now.
Well, Chief, Chief Luiz, as far as I understand, hasn't approved the gate system for emergency vehicles.
I talked to him yesterday, and he's still looking at it, because I think you guys did one up in Pittsburgh or something, something, and he's looking at, looking at the different models that you guys have put forward.
Yeah, so.
I don't think any decisions have been made yet.
Right. So I'd like the, I totally 100% agree that as an exit, it's a terrible idea, it should be, no one should exit there. I'm concerned about commercial vehicles, FedEx, UPS, Mailman, being able to get into the area and make deliveries.
Sure.
The problem is, if you close it off, then the two entrances are going to be down by a mound, what do you call it, down by the gas station, or the lane.
Either FJ Lane or the entrance between 500 and 540.
It's hard for people to recognize that that's a viable entrance.
You can put all the signs in the world that say, don't come in, and they're still going to come in if it's easier.
They're going to, about exiting, yeah, so, I mean, there, there's possibility, so a couple of things on the, as far as an entrance, besides us wanting to have commercial vehicles be able to come in, one, one issue is that if, if cars come down Union Street, so if they're going to take a left on Union Street and go up Main Street, it's just as dangerous, the corner remains as dangerous as it would if they, instead of taking a left, they go straight into the driveway. So you haven't changed a whole lot, because a lot of cars go down Union Street and take a left, and it's just, that's still dangerous at that point. The other concern we have is that if you close it off, people will not go to the two extremes on the road, but they're going to go into the cannabis entry. And at that point, if they turn right, that, that area has to be one-way out, not, you can't have people going, taking a right and going down that way. That's going to be hazardous, because it's too, it's too narrow for a two-way, and if people don't go to the other two extreme entrances, they're going to do that, they're going to come in through the cannabis entrance and turn left, which, you know, all our vehicles, all the commercial vehicles leave that way. So, you know, I'd like to see, we talked about this, but about a gate that lets you an optic eye, that lets you come in and won't let you out, is what, you know, I'd like to see. I'm one person, but that's really.
Well, I mean, I, personally, I, I think that's a good idea, I don't, I don't have a problem with some kind of gate down there, because when that project was in the design, it was supposed to be one-way in and one-way out. One-way in, down by, across from O'Malley's, come down, front of the building, up through and out, and up onto FJ Lane and out. You know, now all of a sudden, the building was, that project was allowed to open and start functioning, and now all of a sudden, that entrance was never closed off, and people have gotten used to it, and da, 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 and now this is where we're at, and I, I don't know. I'm just kind, kind of miffed, because they think you, one-way.
I, I understand.
You know, you're, you're kind of tied up, and then another way, you're not tied up, but you still, it's, it's going to be a crappy intersection no matter what. No matter what we do, how you do it, how much money you put into it, it's still going to be the same old intersection, just, you know, it's wrong, I don't know.
There can't be an intermediate solution, like a gate that only lets somebody in, that's going to cause a disaster.
What are you going to, somebody sitting in a robe in for a Beethoven? Plus, it's going to be rape, it's, you know, you know, it's, it's good, it's.
Well, the idea of the gate would be 10 to 15 feet inside, so someone would drive up to the gate and be out of the road.
So then how would, like, would FedEx have a clicker to open the gate?
That would be an optic eye.
Pardon me?
It would be an optic eye, if you drove in, but you couldn't get out, you couldn't really be closed. If you drove in and reached a certain point, the gate would open.
It's going to be an orange curve for delivery drivers, but.
Well, let's see what the fire chief has to say about it, and then, I mean, he's a representative from the, the traffic committee, and.
You're going to have a gate.
Let's.
I mean, he's going to definitely rather see it totally closed, if he can get through a breakaway gate, you know what I mean? So, yeah, put it on him.
Let's do that.
What, what do we do now, while we wait for the chief? Do you want it open, do you want it closed?
I would just leave the way it is, for now.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Definitely should be closed. If we give a chance, I don't know, but this is, we have to tell them.
Put a chain on it?
This thing was supposed to have been closed over a year ago.
Sure.
So it's not like we're introducing anything else, it should have never been open.
Okay.
Sawhorses there, isn't it?
Well, let's close it then, and then, uh.
At least with, you know, with the sawhorse or something, they can, they can move and let somebody in.
Sure.
You know, at least it's not.
There is, like, yeah.
You know, until you, we get it designed somewhere, that we're not going to have it.
Yeah, whatever. Yeah, let's close it then.
How would you feel if we put up, tomorrow, we put some concrete blocks and block that entranceway, so nobody can get in and out?
Right.
And then, in the next couple of weeks, we can put, we can install our gate.
Yep.
That opens only for the fire truck, so we'll get Chief Luiz.
Well, let's see with the chief, let's, let's put the, put the, put the blocks up, and then we'll go, wait to get some input from the fire chief.
Terrific.
And in the meantime, think about what some signage can do to help.
Well, it's not what I want.
Well, it's not, now's the time to talk.
Well, I said what I wanted, and what I'd like to see is an entrance only, and, you know, it's been decided that that's not going to happen, so.
Let's change.
You know, to deal with, deal with it, that's all. What, what options do I have?
Thank you.
Terrific.
And in the meantime, think about what some signage can do to help.
Well, it's not what I want.
Well, it's not, now's the time to talk.
Well, I said what I wanted and what I'd like to see is an entrance only and, uh, you know, it's been decided that that's not going to happen, so. You know, to deal with the, deal with it, that's all. What, what options do I have?
Thank you.
All right, I think, I think we're up. Good evening. Would you prefer it by sitter stand?
Eat whatever you want.
Uh, thank you all for the chair, chairman, and as the other board members, many of you joining here this evening. I'd like to start off by sharing a couple of project updates for the James's Corner project. Simply last spoke, we shared a couple of things, heard about the visibility of dumpsters, whether construction traffic, just general fundiness. I'm happy to share that we've been able to design our exit logistics plan, all dumpsters in the back of the building, water body in the back of the building. Pretty low visibility in Main Street, Union Street for the last several months. It's our intent, the next one or two, depending on how progress of those many stops, to demolish that seemingly rolling down on the side of Union Street. We'll continue to work with our neighbors and local authorities to eliminate constructions to traffic flow for trucks to access their docks. We've also been working with EPW, this group, Kevin Barlow, uh, for our main street improvements. We've been waiting to begin those main street improvements for the crosswalk and footprints, the stoplight, the yellow blinking light, uh, until the town of Clinton was able to begin work over here. Based on my conversations, our conversations with Kevin, it sounds like that's probably been delayed for at least the rest of the summer, as of this year. We'd like to proceed with traffic improvements to Main Street according to the older conditions over the next one to two months. We'll continue to do it in coordination with EPW, uh, planning those traffic improvements. Before I move on to language loss, which you guys have a package in front of you, if you have any questions or concerns about our progress at James's Corner or our proposal to start our traffic improvements in the next month or two.
No, it's good update.
Great. Uh, I'll move on then. What you have in front of you, the package for a proposed fifty-five plus development located at five thirty and five thirty R in Clinton, which is directly behind the Jackson Mill project. This development, uh, has proposed eight fifty-five plus apartments, eight of which could be earmarked for affordable housing and veteran housing specifically. The project, uh, we'd like to begin demolition in October or November of this year, with construction to begin in February or March, conclusion toward around the conclusion of James's Corner. Uh, we've been working with the Clinton Council on Aging, as well as other community groups. They let us know that there's a senior living housing shortage, there's also been a shortage of, uh, community center space within Clinton specifically here for seniors, uh, in the area. We think it's going to be a wonderful development and, um, I'd love to hear, turn down thoughts or feedback on some of the proposed improvement.
So total eighty units?
Correct. There'd be eighty total units of a hundred proposed indoor parking spaces.
The building out back was under water last week. Cut two feet, it's snowing out, two feet, there's a water in the alley.
So this is behind Jack's Mill?
Yes. Correct, yes.
Try to go through the last week, just two feet of water.
Last time I drove through there, I could hardly get through there with the, uh, vehicle parking from Jack's Mills.
Please review for, uh, the parking in this project primarily will be an insider ability. We also recently expanded our parking lot at the, at the project. We have a fair amount of parking and exceed the, uh, requirement.
Never have enough parking.
Okay, okay, it doesn't have to, it doesn't feel like that.
Any questions from the board?
I'll probably have more thought as time moves on.
Yeah.
That timeline, uh, that's, that's really what, what I do really think about most is, uh, is when, so we would like to get.
No, 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 let's, let's back it up. It's not, not a when, it's an if.
Of course, if, if approved.
Yeah, that's the big if.
So the, uh, traffic flow would go the same as in Jack's Mills?
Yes.
We already got a, we already got a mess there, so.
I know.
Let's add another eighty, eighty units in, so.
What is the solution for between the two, the five thirty and the front building?
In regards to what specifically?
The lake that's always in the driveway back there.
We need, we need drainage improvements, uh, which would make during the construction of that project, absolutely, we all, I, I got back there too. There is, there's a decent amount of water that's been collected, the ground is parched, we've, uh, we've installed new stormwater managements in, in that area.
Don't we think that solution should be at hand before we move on to this?
There's a major water problem back there.
We have made a fair amount of improvements over the last, uh, three to six months to address that specifically within the existing culvert in that basement building of four seventy-six that the tail race connects to. We've installed a large one thousand gallon per minute pump which connects to a new gravity drain that we have, the animal, which then has a secondary pump which connects into our upward parking lot stormwater management system and retention pond. That's removed, that's removed a fair amount of water. We have not had any interior building, uh, water issues since we installed that.
Maybe I entered that alley in the back way. I went through it just last week. Okay, it was a foot and a half to two feet deep.
Into the rear alley, correct, yes, the rear alley. In order to, we need to do more civil design to address that, obviously, but we would please continue to, uh, continue to move back with this project.
I think, see, that, that's not connected with me. That needs to be improved. Project you're in the middle of there now. In my eyes. You know, so I, I think to get a good look at this, I'm going to need to see the drainage correct. Before, for your existing surface water runoff. It's almost there. I know it is.
Sure.
And I watched a lot of the construction of it, you know, but there's that, that issue in the back and it's not fair for the tenants that are there now that sometimes have to go through there when his delivery trucks are up in the alley, you know what I mean?
Break of the way. That culvert, that, that drainage was tied into the culvert that goes into the main street, that goes up to the school street. The town is fixing this summer, I believe. I believe there was a break for that.
Yep.
So we're supposed to tie that drain into that culvert, but then it hasn't been repaired yet, so causes more issues. EPW has asked us to tie that drain into that culvert till it's fixed.
Bring it up, what? When it's fixed, we'll hold off.
We've already passed on too many projects in town already. That's why I had to write down.
I think there's some issues there, but they just got to be done.
We have a letter to, uh, start to decrease our sewer discharge already, so. We're going to say no sometime.
Keep plugging forward.
Excellent.
All right.
Thank you, thank you for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
If you, uh, keep your.
Keep this in the loop.
Anywhere.
Yep. Anybody else here, a couple of other people in the audience?
I, I need to look down, that's what I'm preparing for, just tie it in anyway. No, I don't think, I don't want to get in there. I don't. This is the birdie.
Uh, I'm probably smaller, but I'm still a little bit nervous, so forgive me. This is my husband, Sam, my colleague, and we are proposing to, um, open, reopen the Verted Hill General Store. And, uh, we understand based on the fact that as near as I can tell, it closed about two years ago. I saw it updated menu from June twenty-three online. But, uh, because of the delay, uh, we're told that we should come here to see if we would get permission to, you know, ask for a permit. So if I'm going to jump to page three, it's just a picture of the restaurant. And I consider what they have there is really considerate signage to the neighborhood. And we would certainly, granted, we would want to have a similar, you know, sign that people can see but not lit up or anything like that. And the next thing is about parking. And we understand if anyone knows that area, the parking is limited.
No, parking's horrible. Parking's horrible. And when you pull in there, the two parking spots there, when you have to back out on the Main Street, you take your life into your.
The only answer, yeah, that's not.
Okay.
So it's not candy coat that.
Okay, so, uh, the customers would park in the two spaces in the front?
No, the, 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 the customers park in front. And then they park across the road and they have to run across the road to go down Harbor Road and pull up. Then when they park on the side in the front of the store, they cause traffic problems with the, the traffic cone the other way. Did, you didn't buy the building, did you?
No.
No, you're just looking to rent it?
We're looking to rent it and.
I'm, I'm going to go out on the, out on the limb and I'm going to talk for, I've talked for myself, not the other members of the board. But the building's been empty for more than two years. It's been, the occupancy's been an issue up there in the past and it's kind of a hard sell to really open it back up after it being vacant for two years.
Okay, all right, well, I'm still trying to sell. So, uh, the parking has got the two spaces that are designated for a customer. There are definitely no sit-down consumption law on the premises. It is completely takeout. Employees would back, would park in the back of the parking lot. A dumpster would be in back of the parking lot and it would be professionally maintained, of course, on a regular schedule with cleaning, uh, to limit any smell or any unpleasantness from a dumpster. The sidewalks, of course, would be maintained, uncluttered with well lighting. The ventilation for all the equipment is already completed, um, through the roof, there, there wouldn't be major installation needed. Everything is, as far as I know, up to code, as far as lit, um, egress signs and handicap accessible. The equipment is still in.
No, it's not.
The store and in working order, you know, of course it would need to be inspected, et cetera, updated and cleaning and all that. Three bay sink, all the things for health code with the sanitation system. Uh, the menu for Verted Hill General Store. Again, I saw a menu online, but it had sandwiches and wraps, burgers and hot dogs, entrees with sides, vegan sandwiches and wraps. So it was quite lengthy. Again, all takeout as, as far as I know at that point. And, uh, our menu would be somewhat similar, but the, the main push would be fried chicken, which is something that I don't think is easily, easily accessible to customers from Clinton. So we would go with fried chicken, um, roasted, if you will, it's a special machine type of cooking. And then, um, hand-breaded sandwiches, I mean, excuse me, hand-breaded chicken, grilled sandwiches, salads, beverage cooler, et cetera. And then for the market inventory ideas, we were not going to go with beer or wine, at least at this point. Um, not cigarettes or lottery type of things, but things like canned soup, canned tuna, peanut butter and jelly, sugar flowers and staples. And then, um, candy gum, chip selections, those kind of items. Maybe phone charger, headphones, car fresheners, the kids up the hill. I saw the school, so, um, that's what we had in mind. My husband does have experience. He has his safe certification. He has allergy, um, certificate, CPR training. Sammy is the cook. I work in a school. If I'm cooking, be a little bit hesitant to eat, but he has everything in control. And I'm really proud of him. Thank you for listening. If there are any suggestions of a way that you think we could work besides putting a big open sign and having as much lighting as possible to indicate that there is something there, it's not just a, uh, a neighborhood house or something. To improve, uh, a safety factor regarding parking, we would be certainly happy to think about it or vote for it.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Tom?
It's a good idea, but not at that location.
Absolutely.
That location.
Great idea, but not there.
Not there. You can find it. I wish you could find another place because that, that is, that's torture there. Seen way too many kids on the skid, whacked there. Trying to run across the street back and forth over the years. That's why when over two years, should go back to residential. That's just me. I don't know what you guys feel.
Plus it's in, it's in the, it's in an R one district anyways, you know. I mean, it was a stretch to let the last person open the store up there. It just, it just didn't make it. I hate to see it wasted money like that.
Yeah, well, I guess our thought was, wow, like, there was a place like this right here, so, you know, we thought it would be kind of.
I would love to see you come to Clinton and I would love to see you get a better location. It's just, that location up there is, it's a tough sell. It's, and it's.
So in, let me see. Except for changing, you know, picking up the property and moving into a place with better parking, there really isn't an option, is that?
Yeah, unfortunately.
Unfortunately.
All right, all right, well, we appreciate the information and saving us some money.
Yeah.
Rushing to do something that wasn't even lucked out. All right, thank you.
Well, much.
There you go. Good luck.
Wish you best of luck in your planned location.
Good luck.
I'm just here to make sure you signed the two children's letter for you from last month. You've got one for what you said.
Yep.
Cannabis and the other one is for that, uh, preliminary subdivision denial.
Yep.
Without prejudice. That's all.
Why don't you speak up? You've got you out of here earlier.
That's okay. I, I, I drove an hour and a half for eight minutes. For, for eight minute presentation, I just.
We have minutes to approve.
Yeah, uh, review the minutes from last month, uh, make a motion that we approve.
Motion second.
All favor. You just one question. Boardists, what's this, uh, oh. Paperwork for one-on-one Union Street and one forty-four Pleasant Street? Who was asking? So this is yours? What's it for? No, I'll come down and look at it tomorrow.
Let me see that for a second. Is it for another? This is for, uh, either a bank? This is for either a bank? Yeah, it's for a bank or insurance company, one of the two. Motion adjourned?
All in favor?